And I am calling to order this meeting, regular meeting of the Wood Creek City Council is July 24th. Four P M. So if I can get everyone to rise for a moment, let's start and then we can continue to the budget. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible. Secretary.
Mayor Jean Fresco.
Here.
Mayor for Tenth Member Hines.
Here.
Councilmember Lenea Bailey.
Here.
Councilmember Chris Grummer.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Hamrick.
Here.
Councilmember Kristin Newton.
Here.
Thank you.
We are all here, thank you, and couple of times.
Yes, sir.
No, so. All right.
I'd like to remove item four from the consent agenda, move it to the regular agenda.
Any objection? Do that, any others?
I move that we pass item one through three in the consent agenda. Okay.
All right, move the consent agenda, all in favor, please, for your hand, say aye.
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 Right. So four will be moved, we'll go to the report from officers and council liaisons, opening this up, Parks and Recreation, spa. I do not have a complete report at this time, however, I do have several items to plan to update to make it clearer as to what the total scope is for Parks and Rec. First one, major additions to the overall project, our merry-go-round, which was not included in the very beginning. It was included by way of presentation, I believe it was in June, the twenty twenty-three. The rock wall was included after they needed the idea of the of the observation deck, because the observation deck turned out to be something like forty-one thousand dollars. And between the time that they started and the time that they were even beginning to think about starting the project, it was already six thousand dollars more by way of increased costs. So what happened was the rock wall was within its place as kind of a delineator and a place where people could stand and look out at the rest of the area in a gust of park. Uh, let's see. The hex tubes were also considered to be very expensive, they were around five thousand dollars, and they didn't, Parks and Rec Board did not believe it was something that was feasible for them. There's only a few other things at this point that that we still need to complete, one, we're looking at getting one more bid for the ramp, the gazebo. The 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 concrete that we need for the for the drinking fountain. And we found that we have two ramps already in Creekside Park. We may need a third, it's been determined, or was determined from the beginning, that the engineered wood is ADA compliant already. So once you get into the park and you're in the engineered wood, that's you go across that period, he's actually walking yesterday again. But we would need one more ramp on the other side, and then perhaps something else between the main playground area and the swings. So that's pretty much that, I think I'm into the balance of the items we need for the small playground things in the gusts, it was about six hundred dollars. And that is, that's been approved by by Parks and Rec, I don't know if it was approved by city council or not. It's very, no, I don't think, I don't think it's come back to council yet, so that's a, that's a step on the right. So that's pretty much it for Parks and Rec. Thank you, sir. You have a question, Sam?
Okay, so the tree board, she's chugging along, Judy Newton has joined the tree board and attended her first meeting. She's a great addition to the group and we're very happy to have her on the team, we still have two alternate positions open if anybody knows anyone that's interested. Uh, we've broken into subcommittees to start making progress on the Wood Creek Tree Care Management Plan. So far, the Vision and Mission Committee has started working, and we're also reviewing the tree survey results that we, we did a tree survey amongst ourselves with some software that District of Oakwood sent us up with. And spent that over about two months, we did a survey of just the condition of all the trees in the neighborhood, and what we need, essentially, for capacity. Arbor Day twenty twenty-five has been scheduled for Friday, April fourth, from five to seven P M. Will change to a Friday evening, a competition with a venture on town, it's sporting events, hopefully urge a little bit more attendance by citizens. Um, with our tree survey results, they have comprised a list of eight trees on city property that are seriously in need of attention and/or removal. And that list has been given to Mr. Burton to start working on. And the tree board is also going to start hosting a second event every fall, tentatively titled Run for the Trees. This is going to be a community event that will encourage residents to run or walk five K throughout Wood Creek. And everyone that crosses the finish line will get a tree sack link to plant on their property. There will also be onsite tree education, presentations by the tree board, activities for families, and the planting of a new tree in one of our city parks. And finally, I've sent out the Oakwill RP to seventeen Oakwill-qualified arborists in the county, I forgot for four, so I have some names set up with them tomorrow and Friday, because some of them have some further questions. And then hopefully we will start getting some bids from them.
Kristin, is the, the tree survey, I mean, is part of your concern is complete?
Yes, done by us, not by.
Right, right, well, we always plan to do that.
Yeah. But this gives us a really good starting point of what.
How does it compare with the first survey, you know?
Um. I didn't print it up for everybody, I haven't. Not. Compared, I mean, there's definitely more issues than compared to the last one, it's not it's not terrible, but I definitely think the thing could be addressed, but, but we've really ranked them as far as like what needs first priority, priorities, so on.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you, do you have a? Any questions from Ms. Richards? All right, we'll move over to the regular agenda, we can look at items number four, which is the city council meeting, July ten.
I need to make an amendment to edit the meeting minute for July tenth.
Are you sure?
There are two issues. Um, the first one being page twenty-nine, item twelve. There is an amended motion listed that never occurred, Councilmember Hamrick paused, missed, asked the attorney a question, and then revoked his amendment.
What page do you want?
Page twenty-nine, item twelve. Said, wait, the second, the amended motion was actually never made and completed, he paused in the middle of it, asked the attorney a question, received legal or, you know, consult on item. And then the, I'm not amending it, and conversation proceeded, council never took up that item, and the amended motion was never made.
Do you want me to include the two times that Councilmember Grummer asked for legal counsel as well, and?
No, all that's supposed to be in the minutes is just the motion to vote, so. Yeah, if it didn't occur, then, you know. I wouldn't. Uh, the second item being on page thirty-three, item twenty. The amended motion as listed by Councilmember Hamrick was actually adjusted with legal consult, never proceeded, and the vote we took was on a separate motion, actually, the motion being motion to approve proposed budget as amended. This was prompted by Councilmember Lenea, missing an additional motion on top of Councilmember Hamrick. And then conversation with, and legal intervened, and we moved forward with a different motion, being motion to approve proposed budget as amended, that was what was actually voted upon. So, the amended motion by Councilmember Hamrick was changed and never occurred, and it needs to be replaced with motion to approve proposed budget as amended.
Fine.
Ironically, it was actually by the attorney, but we, I said, yes, let's do that, it came off of Lenea's comments, and really, it was a rewording of Councilmember Hamrick's, so I don't know that you would assign, you could assign a multi-person. But the wording was not as Councilmember Hamrick is listed here stating by the time that interaction was complete.
That, anybody, any comments, any discussion? Otherwise, we'll pass those edits on to the city secretary and we'll get updated and bring it back. Good luck, Sam. Or as the the, you and.
I'm gonna email her everything I can.
Yeah, okay.
I'm actually the other one.
All right, so we as well, um. The, the motion is to, is to have staff edit those edits, bring it back to council, so all in favor? All right.
I'm fine, sorry.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else? All right, I have I have four twelve, and we'll go into the workshop for communication on the advisory boards in council. Mr. Grummer?
Thank you, sir. If we could go to page forty-four of our packet. Um, this is that list of possible questions that we can kind of entertain, the one thing I'd like to go immediately to is the bottom of that page forty-four. I've written out what I think the exact wording should be included in the liaison report to really, to really explain all the Toma parts of it, that we didn't actually put into the liaison policies or anything, I guess we just assumed it would be there. Um, so I'm gonna redo that one, so when it comes to council sending something to an advisory board. In large, my screen.
Do you want me to put it up there?
Oh, that'd be great.
As a statement.
Just that way everyone can read it, but I'm still gonna read off my page forty-four. When council makes a motion and sends X to an advisory board, the liaison screenshots are right down the exact wording of the agenda item that the motion was made on. The liaison gathers the packet documents from that agenda item, or any additional existing documents, council is requesting to be sent to the advisory board as part of their approval motion. No new documents can be created that council did not vote to approve sending forward. No edits to existing documents can be made that council did not vote to approve to be made, this is Toma. The liaison screenshots are right down the exact motion name. All of the above is sent to the chair of the advisory board and placed on the agenda item packet for the advisory board to consider. And then in the reverse.
Look under casey category, sorry, sorry.
Sorry to interrupt.
Oh, right, correct.
And then in the reverse, when advisory board makes a motion to send something back to council or send something to council, liaison screenshots are right down the exact wording of the agenda item that the motion was made on. The liaison gathers the package documents for that agenda item, or any additional existing documents the advisory board is requesting to be sent to council. No new documents can be created that the advisory board did not vote to approve sending forward. No edits to existing documents can be made that the advisory board did not vote to approve to be made. Again, this is Toma. The liaison screenshots are right down the exact motion name. All of the above is submitted to as an agenda item for council's consideration, which would be the irregular agenda of council. The why I read that is that we have now two forms, initially, we, I only knew of the one of the advisory boards filling out a communication form to send to us, and that's how we got their motions. But I didn't know that staff had this other one, which was council sending to an advisory board. So I think rather than all the screenshot, when we get to the part where we're talking about making sure the exact motions are forwarded in this communication, maybe we talk about the liaison filling out, once council's made a vote to send something to an advisory board, maybe it's the responsibility of the liaison to fulfill this council's version of this communication form. Let's just, kind of a new, since I wrote that part on the questions, that's supposed to, oh, well, this could actually facilitate that. Everyone's getting the exact motions in the communications, and so nothing's left out.
I mean, it's a pretty simple, straightforward form.
It is.
But, I mean, basically the same form is in reverse.
Um, did you wish me to read some of these questions that are out there, or I'm assuming you all read them already and kind of wanna, maybe there's one that stood out to you that.
Yeah.
I thought it's, I'm gonna start out with the badge, but I really wanna refocus kind of the conversation a little bit, Kristin, really appreciate your diligence, and I know you have that kind of a mind that you look to there of the thought of the edges and in terms of lineal thinking, but I wanna go back to what these committees are about, they're all sort of, Santa talks to a friend, and he, Santa has friends, and he says, I hate those elves, those elves drive me crazy. They don't pay attention, they need to work, or they take too many breaks, then guys go, shoot, just fire them. Santa goes, I can't, they're volunteers. We have volunteers, and they're precious, and we, I wanna keep the fact that these committees are volunteers. I've been a member of Lions Club for nineteen years, and first five years I was in charge of all market day volunteers. Uh, Lions Club has been in business sixty years, they do a lot of charity, they have a lot of volunteers, they don't micromanage the volunteers. They give them their jobs, they pat them on the back, and they do it right. So what I don't want us to do is to discourage our volunteers, we have really talented volunteers, especially when we get retired people who've got engineering or other business skills, and they're kind of independent thinkers, they're gonna do their thing. And if we, if we put them in too small a box, I'm afraid we'll, we'll lose some of our real talent. Um, right now, we need new recruits for the IM panel, and we've got a lot of business in that one, we lost our chair, our vice chair. Um, Roger's whole has some health issues, and he's good friends with Craig and, and Jack Post, I don't know if he'll stay. So we're gonna need some new members, and we don't have alternates. Um, if I were to suppose that we have this nice book that Suzanne put together, it's everything you ever wanted to know about Toma, how to broaden one of meeting, the criteria. And so we have the rules laid out, and she's done this for the planning panel. But if I were to hit people with these rules early on, and say, we're gonna make it more stringent, we might have city council members looking at the video, make sure you don't color outside the line. I'm afraid we'll lose people, so I think of anything, we should take consideration of the volunteers, and, and allow them to volunteer. And also, the liaisons are supposed to be, I looked at other cities that have liaisons, there aren't many, but Lago Vista is one. And what I noticed about their communications, it's like it's a friendly communication, they don't limit their liaison, they can't, they can't make suggestions. But they're also showing the, that the liaison can be a support to the committees, not a, not a rule follower so much. So I just wanna make sure we get on the team of, these are our, our precious resources. City council members are, you know, they're the ones that are not, they're gonna take in screenshots and making all those details and that, so I'd like to keep this in our jobs as ordinance makers, and, and keep the business of the committees with the committee chair. That helps.
Yeah, good. Couple of things, you know, first of all, yeah, we're all volunteers too.
Yes.
Um, and, and it's different between, I mean, I've worked with a lot of volunteer associations and different groups, and sort of a ton of boards from the international level all the way down to the, you know, the city. Um, and, and taking care of volunteers is, is a, is a big job, is a very rewarding job. Being a volunteer, be a very rewarding job, but it's a lot different being a volunteer for the Lions Club than a volunteer for the city, because the city is under state regulation to do certain things, certain rules, the Lions Club is not, the Lions Club can be very informal and, and easygoing and and do almost whatever they want, you know, where, where we have laws that regulate how our council works and our advisory council, our advisory board's work. When, when I decided that I'd like to see our liaison program put back in place, you know, my thought was, you know, our council liaisons are the ones that, you know, really should know the Toma rules, really should know sort of how to make sure their meeting runs well, and to help the, help the, the advisory boards, help the chairs, um, to just handle their job in a friendly way. It was never, it was never meant to tell them what to do, how to do it, but rather to facilitate the process of getting information back and forth, you know, from, from committee to council, and council back to committee. And so, so what, what we're trying, what we're striving to do is put a lot of that, a lot of that responsibility on the liaisons and staff, you know, to help the advisory boards, our precious volunteers, so that they're not overwhelmed. Um, we're not asking, we're not really asking the, the board chairs or the, or the board members um, you know, to do anything spectacular, I mean, I've been to a bunch of these meetings, and they, they, um. Roger, Roger probably isn't that excited about how the way his rules are, are made, but it's like the, the um, the efforts were made, um, and it's been done, and if, and if, we have good liaisons that are, that are working with them and can just, you know, jot down the things that need to be dotted down and, and, and get it to the next step. It's, it's taking that burden off the advisory board, off of our volunteers, and putting it on the elected officials who should be able to, to handle, you know, that, that task. But the problem has been is that we, we started getting into violations of Toma when, um, when we when we sort of go off, so, so what, what I think you know, Mr. Grummer is trying to do is that, well, if we just use these simple forms um, and, and just rely on those, then that, that transfer of information from, from advisory board motion to, you know, council, final council approval gets simplified. And conversely, if, if council wants infrastructure mobility to take a, a specific project and vote it on here, liaison goes back to the council with that information, and so, you know, the, you know, council would like us to take a look at this, here's the information, so. So I, I don't think we're, I think if anything, we're trying to back off of, of putting the on this on the volunteers, and frankly, putting it on y'all.
That.
You know, the liaison.
Great, I mean, that is my goal, is the, to facilitate the volunteers on these advisory boards, to make sure that they're getting what council's asking of them. And so that they can respond and get that back to council, or to even know what advisory boards are wanting us to entertain, that I just feel like there's been some gaps.
We have had some troubles, we've had some, we've had some, some gaps, we've had some, some um, some issues that, you know, a little better, a little better onboarding, a little better communication would solve.
Yeah.
And I think that's what this workshop is about, is how do we, how do we improve the communication? Um, you know, we do need to do a better job of training, well, I think we need to do a better job of, of recruiting and making it, I mean, this should be fun, you know, this should be, I mean, this works, yes, but this should be fun. I mean, I, I, I wanna be able to come to a council meeting and, and be with friends and have a good time while we're conducting the business of the city. And I think the advisory boards, you know, Phil, a lot of those advisory boards, they're made out of friends, you know, you talk about, you know, a group of family, a lot of, a lot of them tell us are buddies, you know, and so, and so we are very grateful for them and, and their time.
And for me, but it's, it's very important for me personally, that we have that standard of transparency that the law requires of us, so that citizens get to see every single step that's being taken on each unit, and that there's, that's what the motions and the votes do, and that's what the minutes do, is it shows you the stuff that we actually picked, and then it moves to this thing, and then it shows you the steps that they actually picked, and it goes to this stuff. And all of that needs to be clearly trackable for, for the public legally, that's legally the requirement.
Now, there is some.
We have the Toma.
Toma.
Can we just eliminate Toma from everything?
Why would you want to eliminate transparency and public involvement and notifications from city business?
Because then some of these complications, we wouldn't be breaking the law, we didn't have the Toma requirements. I, I just, I.
I think moving away from transparency is a really bad idea. I'm gonna take a firm line on that.
I, I would too, um, we've worked for the people. And they should be able to see every step and everything that we do.
If they so choose.
If they so choose.
It's kind of like.
It's not.
It's, it's not actually that hard to just keep everything in public meetings, the entire council has to run that way, so if we can do it, handling the uppermost, most important, most serious business of the city, we can function in meetings, and our advisory board can definitely function in need.
And that's why, again, I'm gonna point to those first two forms in the packet, Suzanne, thank you so much for all this. Um, I literally think this could be our standard, but we haven't, we didn't put this into the liaison policy. Like if we go, hey, if y'all vote to send something to P and Z, I know that I'm gonna go get a copy of this council to advisory board form, right, the motion was just made, that, you know, I work with the city secretary, I'm sure I have it all right, and then get the documents that were in the packet, attach it to them, and talk to the chair of P and Z, and go, hey, this is what council wants to happen, or they're sending this to you, can we get it on the regular part of your agenda so that you can consider it and take possible action?
Why doesn't city staff do that?
City staff does do that, in the past, it's been the chairperson, or, and when there's missing a chair, the vice chair will sit with me, and, and Mr. Grummer was actually with me when I worked with planning and zoning. But, um, immediately after the meeting, or as soon as possible, whenever the chair, the vice chair is available, they'll, we'll go through this form together.
So you're saying that vice chair or the chair have been integrally involved already, as far as how they do it?
And some have been using it since June last year, when I made.
Two of the, the other four, the one-two count, I mean, from council to.
Which one do you want to look at, right now, I've got, um, item before, the city council, so that would be advisory board to council.
That one I know is coming our direction, it's.
Yes.
It's the one that goes the other way.
The other way, request from city council for action on an item.
Yeah.
That one.
Yes.
That, I, I know the previous city manager knew that, but it was.
Yeah, no, I just, we, we didn't know it existed, so we didn't know how to find it. So I think that's great that it's now in this package so that we see it. So that if we ever do make a motion to send something somewhere, we have this form, we go, oh, okay.
It's just one of those things. I mean, if this is lying on the table when we go to our meetings, oh, yeah, I need to know.
Yeah.
Start writing down notes.
So this is just, it's just the form. We're just putting this into a form rather than more impromptu, just, just had notes. So, okay.
And that, what that does is it ensures, because sometimes our motions, if you notice, they can get long or there'll be amendments to it. And so when we have all that on the form, we can ensure that the advisory boards have the full scope of the motion. And that, you know, sometimes it gets communicated that, that part of it only makes it there. And then their, you know, they're going off the way the information they've been given.
Well, what happened, what happened is, you know, the advisory board sat in there and said, and somebody said, hey, hey, council wants you to do this. And I go, okay. And, but there's no, there's no background, there's no background. And I know the P and Z dealt with that a few times. Where it's like, well, what is it they want to do? What if they wanna, well, I'm not sure, but there's no, there's no materials. There's nothing, you know, it wasn't, nothing was here, they invented, so it goes back and forth. Whereas, you know, if you just say, you know, council is asking you to look at the replay over here. Um, here's all the documentation that the council had, you know, so take a look.
And also to, to make sure that we put on this form that it needs to be as an action item on their agenda.
Yeah, yeah.
And then when it comes our direction, it has to be an action item on our agenda.
Right, right.
And that's where it would be, like, let me go back to the beginning. This is.
Yeah, their motion recommended is the, is the bottom of that form.
Yeah, that would be where, where you direct the advisory board to do what you want them to do.
Right, regimented motion. You have the history and the summary, but you can also have mature access to that.
I don't think these forms are like micromanaging at all. I think it's just giving you a streamlined process, a checklist, you know, so you can just go through, nothing's falling through the cracks and it's just moving the transition from advisory boards to council just a little bit.
Yeah, one of the things that drives all this is, is the fact that our advisory board boards are autonomous bodies. They, they are their, their own chair, they have their own chair, their own vice chair. Um, we appoint members, but hopefully they're helping to recruit and, and look at succession planning with their own bodies. Um, but basically, you know, that's, that's what they do. So, so the, the role of the liaison, at least the way I always saw it, was to facilitate communication. And I, I don't, I mean, we're talking about two-way communication. I still look at this as three-way communication. And I've used the, I've used the, um, example of the three-legged stool a million times, sorry to do it again. But if you've got staff, council liaison and advisory board, you know, all those three layers, if there's one missing, you know, that, that still is gonna topple over. You know, so it's like, I, I don't wanna see really anything going back and forth between advisory boards and council that those three groups aren't copying them, you know, just so that everybody knows what's going on and somebody can go, oh, yeah, I got that. You know, and with the goal being all the time to make the, the role of the advisory board members simpler, you know, not more complicated. And the rules that the state hands down to us for transparency, um, can be onerous. You know, where, you know, and, and if, if I'm, if I'm an advisory board member and I come to a, a advisory board meeting once a month, um, and I get a couple of emails, I mean, it's not, it's not necessarily a big part of, I mean, a, a big time, uh, constraint on me, you know, but, but I'm not, I'm not living it like, I mean, we do council stuff all the way along. Um, they don't necessarily. So we, we need to make, and we want them to, to feel good about their service and, and, and not to be overwhelmed. And that's where I think that the liaisons can do a great job towards, towards helping with that.
I'm, I wanna speak to, to one of the points about the concept of, uh, removing our requirements of Toma on our advisory boards. It gets really problematic to not require them to be following Toma because of the pressure put on council to rubber stamp items from them. Meaning anytime any one of y'all has pressured our council into accepting a parks item without discussion and edits or a road item without discussion and edits, um, that in effect creates a dynamic where our advisory board must follow Toma. Because if council is ever sort of accepting work from an advisory board and sort of being like, you know what, we really trust our advisory board. Like if you put that on the other side and we were like, yes, we really trust our advisory board, the experts on this topic, uh, minimal discussion, we believe this is ready, and you do rubber stamp an item and that advisory board was not subject to Toma, you have just created a dynamic where you have potentially violated the law. And so not only whenever we expanded our advisory boards beyond parks and P and Z did we seek to bring everybody in alignment with the Toma to avoid possible violations of law, the other component being to get all of these secret groups that had no accountability back into accountability to the public. Because items were going to groups and disappearing indefinitely, or items would come from groups where a group of people did a bunch of work and came up with a report and then that report was being used by council, but there was never any accountability for how that report was generated, who gave input on it or any of them. So I do not support pulling advisory boards away from Toma. I think it sets a bad precedent for the city and creates issues. All Chris was doing with that comment regarding Toma was restating Toma rules in the council liaison policy because we signed, took oaths to follow it, right? So our advisory board members have a lot more protection than we do in regards to accountability for violations. Does that make sense? And accountability to residents, right, for sharing of information. Now, with that being said, I, I do, I'm gonna share an unpopular opinion, but something I personally experienced over the last year. One of these forms was being used against a chairperson and was literally impeding city business as a gatekeeping methodology by a former staff member. They literally would not carry forward an item to council's agenda because they repetitively held the belief, the opinion, not fact, that that chairperson had not appropriately filled out this form. Even though there was no set guidelines or requirements, nor had council ever approved that sort of gatekeeping and block in the process. So that chairperson, if we're talking about honoring our chairpeople, experienced unnecessary harm in seriously a huge waste of time, my time as well, um, dealing with these forms. So to me, I sort of do feel like it's a, excess paperwork and redundancy. And before people go off on that comment, let's back up and, and look at this from a macro perspective. Meaning, we created liaisons to better improve the communication here. And it only works if the people in that role commit to the job, right, and do the job. When you have people not doing the job, it does fall apart and it doesn't matter what we put on paper. The liaison position was also necessary because we were having items dropped regularly from council to advisory boards. They just would never appear and we had no accountability for who was in charge of making sure they appeared. Right? Again, many of those staff members are not here. So we can't point the finger at them or anything, but it was a procedural failing that caused the liaison policy to be created. Right? So moving the flash forward to now, it's an imperfect piece, right? It's not solving all of our problems, it's not fixing everything. I do believe that we maybe shouldn't just abandon it. Um, or, and I don't believe that we're, we're we're causing volunteers issues by asking them to track their business. I think most of them are very happy to do that. They just don't necessarily know how or what's expected of them. Now, that's the only place where I see that this form could be relevant. Meaning if you have a chairperson or a council person who's unsure of how to do city business, then this form is a resource for them. But setting it up as a requirement for city business to flow, to me, is unnecessary.
How does that information get to the proper places if, if, if not?
Well, I can be honest. I've never had an issue as a liaison serving my advisory board, making sure the flow of information goes back and forth.
Well, this is a tool to help people that aren't as good as you.
Right. So that's why I'm saying keeping it as a resource is one thing, setting it as a mandate does create extra.
The mandate, the mandate thing, I mean, I know that there have been, been time, at least a time, about times where, you know, something was delayed because, you know, it was not, or we signed or something. It's like, no, this is not, you know, that's not what this is about. This is about, about a tool that helps get the information, you know, through the process. And what we, what we are doing is making it thoughtful and comprehensive.
Okay.
Um, so, so, you know, we've got tools that make it easier to.
Sure, it is. I'm almost done. I'll just mention that. Um, to me, the thing our city continues to actually lack is a central tracking board for items. There's no reason why we in our drive don't have a shared city tracking document. We, at any point in time, any council member should be able to log on, look at a document and see where a variety of items are with a brief update as to why they're sitting further out. I myself have created them repetitively in the past. We've even used them on council, the ones I've created, right? So to me, pastime, the city has something like that. And I also believe that that would probably actually correct a lot of this because we could work better as a team, because I could say, hey, Bob, don't forget, you know, that parks item, whatever, you know? And, and so I can support Bob rather than setting somebody up to fail, right? And just letting them fail and then being mad that there's a failure, right? We could collectively support each other in the flow of business. The other thing we could talk about is I know somebody was like, well, why doesn't staff do this, right? Well, a lot of our advisory boards have, because staff was expressing issues with going to so many meetings, we said, okay, we'll honor that. You don't have to attend all of these meetings. So some of our advisory boards are keeping their own minutes. So just saying, well, staff should just do it and does other decisions we've made. So we can't just go in that direction either. The, I'm not really sure what our end goals are for tonight, but two items I think are necessary is adding their, the important statement from page forty-five about new documents and editing things outside of meetings. Nobody should be editing anything outside of a meeting once it's a fight, like if we have a document and everybody talks about it and we left with a final document, that version should appear on the next meeting. If somebody has proposed edits, then they submit another document with proposed edits. But we have to have theme tracking of documents and items and from page to page. So I believe that needs to be put into policy somewhere.
We can call that on them.
I have repetitively called it out as well, yes. Yes, I am aware it is an ongoing issue. Um, the other component that I would like to see us leave this conversation with is, uh, some sort of plan for a central item tracking board. Worksheets are great. If people need paperwork sheets, I think this is a great resource, especially as a coaching tool for new people. I don't necessarily wanna see these forms become requirements that are then used against people, right? Because volunteers are volunteers and everybody does kind of do their work differently. I can honestly say, Mr. Miller, who's a chairperson here today, fills out an amazing report that goes lovely on this worksheet. I would never want that to be limited, right? So that's, I'm done applying.
So, I'm gonna follow up with your, I really like this idea of an online, you know, in our system tracking of how motions go from here to the, to an advisory board and then back and where the steps are and all that. How would we go about creating that?
I mean, kind of visualize it and like, yeah, no.
That would be, depending on, it can be built, but considering how many motions y'all made in one meeting, it would be a very large spreadsheet.
Well, I'm thinking of it from the perspective of, like, just tracking what council sends to an advisory board, their motions and how they get things sent back to council.
That would be easy.
Yeah, like just start there.
You just something about a simple tracking board for council to advisory board.
Yeah, we don't actually have that much stuff that goes, that's revolving around the council liaison policy. In fact, when I built this tracking system for my own use, it doesn't, it's not very big. Um, you know, because we don't have that many boards and really realistically, how many items are flowing between them and us, right?
Yeah.
Now, you could add another item for like all city business and the idea that all motions we make would create this huge thing. The reality is not all motions we make create a waterfall of pending business. Does that make sense? Some of them is a one-off task and staff that goes and does it. It's, this is only for things that are trackable, meaning we're waiting for something to come back from us from the attorney. We're waiting for staff to finish updating fill-in-the-blank and bring it back to us. That's the kind of stuff. It's the returning, the things we need to track, right? If it's a one-off and we say, stop, post, post all these, uh, job proposal buildings. I mean, there could even just be a calling for that, a pending staff business and it's a running tally and they check it off when it's done, you know, I mean, we have a huge suite available to us and new systems and it, and it would be really relevant to use it.
Well, the reason I was asking is that, how do we make that motion once we get out of, out of workshop to go? Cause if we just made a general motion, let's do that, the, the assumption is staff does it. But I'm like, well, it sounds like you're pretty humble, but I want some more work on you.
You can just take what's already created and build on it. I mean, it's not like a range.
Well, um, you mentioned three-legged stool, the council staff and the liaisons, rather, no, I'm sorry, council.
Yeah.
The advisory board.
And liaisons.
And liaisons, or even staff. Um, one thing that, that we haven't talked about here is how the, the advisory board members, or at least the advisory board chairman, think about this. What do they think? And I think that it would be important and good to get some input from them before we jump in and make this, uh, policy today. If they were to know exactly what we're talking about, they may be excited about it, they may not, I'm not sure. But I think that they should have a say also.
Yeah.
In this, especially since they are, and I don't mean to make this sound anything other than it is, they are our precious volunteers. And it's, it's.
It's.
And actually, we, we've been having that conversation, um, you know, as you, as you probably know, you know, I, I started doing the little kitchen cabinet meeting with all the, all the, uh, advisory board chairs. Um, and it includes Mayor Potem and City Manager. Um, and, um, and so we were, we were going on pretty well and then we started dropping, so now we're, now we're short a couple of chairs. But we've been talking about doing exactly that. So, so bring, don't wait for the next regularly scheduled meeting, but have a meeting in between and start talking about, you know, so how do you see this working? What, I mean, how would it just suit you? I mean, we can make a motion to do, you know, to, to have staff sketch out a, a tracking board or, you know, two-way communication back and forth between advisory boards and council. But I still would want, I still wanna hear from the, from the chairs as to what's working and what hasn't worked. We're just down to the chairs. You know, so, so I don't know whether we just have a, have a meeting with the three that remain or maybe the idea was be willing to, you know, to step in and, and have that, have that meeting and, and just, you know, see where we're up to. I mean, we've had some good conversations. I'm just pointing to Jim over there because he's made pretty much every single, um, kitchen cabinet meeting and has had a lot to offer. And, um, and it's been, it's been very helpful, I mean, to, to understand that. But, but I do want to, I mean, if, if we're, if we're, you know, you don't wanna solve a problem that doesn't exist. You know, we don't wanna, you know, it's like if it's, if it's, no, we're fine, you know, liaison are great, or at least mine is, you know, or, you know, I think that, that part of it is not so much on the, on the advisory board members and chair, um, as it is on us, to really understand our role and to understand um, how, how Toma impacts how the communication flows and to just, you know, make it as easy as possible. And I'm just not sure that, that, um, that we've done a great job of onboarding our council members and work on our chairs. I think.
But, yeah, I'm just, um, first of all, I do think we're making these changes. Maybe the chairs don't have any suggestions, but I'll bet they would. And it's a perfect time to get their input and. Any suggestions, but I'll bet they would, and it's a perfect time to get their input and actually rather than giving them something, you have to do this. Get their input from it, and they look, they go, oh, good, that makes it easier, that way I don't have to follow some of these rules. And also to make a point endeavor this way, which I think was good, you're following Toma, not so much just for you guys, but that's the way the process works. And if the council is going to listen to your recommendations, you need to be following the, the Toma procedures. Uh, so that we can, we can trace and track, so I think it's a really good reason to bring the chairs in, and to make final decision.
I just want to make sure everybody realizes the council liaison policy is passed and in place already and should have been already shared with each of you and all of our chairpeople, right? Because I have repetitively heard from people, it was not shared, so we need to make sure that could be a conversation with your board members to make sure they understand it. I was the person who shared it with my chair, they were never given it, so um, we need to make sure that happens, um, if it's not already done. With that in mind, uh, I think it's great if we get input on it, I don't think it should change any decisions we decide to make today. Um, more input, especially because they don't really hear us trying to abandon any of these efforts in for communication and have accountability there. I will say, one of the only other points that we haven't really talked about, but I think is really important is um, that no one person should be impeding the flow of business. Whether it's a staff member, a liaison, or a chairperson, what a collective body votes on, goes, period. And while these are all autonomous bodies and we're an autonomous body, there is an obligation to um follow through with the flow of city business. For example, the dog park is a really great example, council sent a directive for the parks board to consider a place for a dog park. A previous chair never put it on their agenda, and to this day, I don't think it's ever officially gotten on their agenda. And that is a single individual impeding the flow of business and superseding a council voted upon directive. And whatever we need to put in these documents so people understand that, now, I do believe the chairpeople have the autonomy to say, wrong agenda, we needed to come on the next agenda. Or um, you know, like, I need more information from council to support this item, whatever, right? And I'm not saying their hands are tied, but no one person should be impeding any city business, that goes for staff, that goes for us, right? You know, if your, if your board's voted on an item and you don't like it, you still have to bring it up here. And 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 advocate on their behalf, and then you can share your opinion after you've done that, right?
Yeah, you can bring it in bogus.
That would be another point that I would like to see more clearly um highlighted in in the council liaison policy. Because I don't believe people really understand that now.
Well, the liaison policy has been shared with council and with all the advisory board chairs, um, but, you know, but it's like, it hasn't been read to them. I mean, it's like, here, look, and you have to actually read it for it to work.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you gotta read that.
Yeah.
I don't, I'm sorry, I didn't know that. And now, now, going forward, you know, like, like when we had our retreat in January, you know, I would like to be able to do that, you know, every year. But, and and expand it to include everything, I mean, just post it, all the councils there, all the, all the advisory board chairs and members are invited. And that you do have some, some basic training on, you know, just how to get, how to get city business, you know, through the. Parents, but for, you know, there's logical conclusions and making me hungry at the same.
Um, Mike, the one thing I do want us as liaisons to watch for is that um, in order for an action to be taken. It has to be on the regular part of the agenda, and it has to say, discuss and take possible action. What that's doing is that notice giving the public, oh, something might happen, some action may take place. That gives them the notice that they could come in and voice their opinion on that. Where if it shows up as a report, no action can be taken, so there's nothing actually happening as an action wise.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that, that applies to advisory boards, they need to have an actionable item in their regular agenda for them to take it up, to even consider it. They can hear about it, but that isn't them actually, from the law's point of view, they haven't heard it. It doesn't exist, I could say things, but it's, it's not then presented to them, unless it's on a regular agenda. And the same when it comes to us, when an advisory board makes a recommendation. The liaison on staff or whoever, it's not in the form of a report from an advisory board. It's an actionable item on our agenda so that we can accept it and possibly take action on it. So that's.
It's gonna be this one. And it's gonna be right there, right?
Yes, but I just want to make sure that when you, so as liaison, we're responsible to be placing the advisory board's recommendation to council. As in, we submit the item, so we make sure we're submitting it as a regular agenda item, and it's not just a report.
Right, I mean, you can have a report and then like, like, then on the regular agenda, discuss and take action.
Yeah, so for, yeah, for instance, P and Z, they had multiple things that they made as a recommendation, well, I made it as part of my report. But then I also broke those things out into the actual agendas that council considered and take actions.
Right.
So, it can be in both places, it just, in order for council to actually have it, has to be on.
And, and you know, we've got, we've got, you know, really good staff people too, and we've got colleagues, you know, if you're, if, if, if you're not sure. You know, if it's confusing, if it's like, you know, I haven't handled this particular kind of a resolution before or something like that, then, you know, go to staff, go to, come to me, come to, you know, colleagues. And and just get whatever guidance you need, but it, it is going to have to be submitted as an item, you know, with some access. All right. Anything else um to workshop on this? I think that, I think that we're all on the same, you know, not maybe exactly on the same page, but um, but I don't think there's, there's. I don't think there's anything that's going to keep us from, you know, continuing to have the relationship between the liaisons, the advisory board and staff. And we just need to work the strength of that there.
And so I did actually want to, you brought up a really good point, which was the idea that people aren't reading it, and that was one of my notes, actually, my question's like, is there a better way for it to be read or understood? Like, the moment um Mayor Proton dropped the visual in part of, I was like, that makes, that's, I'm a visual person.
Yeah.
Is there other things we can do, or does that work for everyone?
No, that's why I brought up the idea of, you know, we, we get everybody together in a room, you know, with the presentation on the screen. And we go, okay, so, step by step, here's how we work it as a process, and we spend, you know, maybe it's forty-five minutes, maybe it's two hours. But, you know, we just, we walk and we get the questions, and we just make sure everybody's, you know, on the same page, understands the process. You know, I don't think, I mean, this is, this is really no different from, from all of our, I mean, we've got a lot of professional, experienced people on our advisory boards. They are quite used to filling out reports and filing, you know, filing that and 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 taking things, you know, up the chain, you know, to get things done, they're used to this. I mean, it's not, it's not anything different, and so we're just trying to facilitate it. All right.
May I just make a point of clarification, just so everybody knows, um, it was Mayor, former Mayor Proton fully, who. Wanted staff to not attend all the advisory board meetings, it was an agenda item on the September thirteenth agenda last year. It wasn't, it wasn't staff complaining.
Maybe not at four, because of literal issues with all of the meetings. So whether or not it was you personally complaining to him, I mean, we can watch the meeting, but he talks about it. It's an unnecessary burden on staff, they're spending too much time, it's costing the city money, et cetera, so that definitely was part of the conversation.
You know, if it's, if it were, you know, if it were entirely up to me, you know, then the liaisons would, you know, freely, you know, manage the, the minutes. Um, record the motions, you know, make sure everything's taken down and in good shape. Um, if it, to me, the, the advisory board chairs would reach out to their members and say, hey, don't forget, we've got a meeting, got any agenda items. You know, I don't think that's a staff function, I think that's a, an advisory board chair function to make sure that they're going to have a forum. And that they, you know, have, you know, the agenda items, you know, in place, they can build their agenda, just like we do. You know, I mean, we build our agendas together, you know, I'll send out a reminder, say, hey, don't forget, the hunt's coming up, you're coming to it, you need, oh, you will see them. Um, well, you know, that's, that's not, that's not too much to ask people, and and I really don't think it's, it's staff's responsibility to um, to, to manage all the communication. I think that a lot of it, if not, most or all of it, can come from, from the, from the board chairs.
Well, Ms. Ms. Richardson, may I ask, how do you feel about the form that I created to track y'all's motions, since I don't attend y'all's meetings of the tree board?
I like it.
Do you like that? And that's, I use those forms to create the minutes, and then she's responsible for documenting it, and I just type out whatever she does.
Yeah.
We, we.
And I'm not, right, I'm not, I'm not sure about how that system works, but I have been liaising.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but, you know, again, it's a tool that just makes it easier for us to get the, get to work at the city though.
So to, to, because I'm not there to chair me the tree boards, so you just have basically a stack of these? And so in time, the tree board makes motions, you. You go at them?
No, it's just a, a document she created for people to track minutes, so.
Oh, it's not credit.
No, it's so she can transcribe other people's writing, because people were tracking minutes a variety of ways, without the uniformity, it was creating issues with.
Okay.
Streamlining of minutes, transcribing, right? Because everybody has different handwriting, or maybe they don't understand what needs to be weird, so it's, it's literally just.
Well, goes back to our conversation about what goes in the minutes.
Right.
Yeah, the minutes are.
I was gonna have y'all share, sorry. You want to share, I'm going home. You see, I'm gonna get it on you.
I'm good, I, I'm used to it.
Yes.
Yeah, and then, so, let's see, learn, I, like, let's, I just want to be clear, I support staff creating whatever documentation they need. And managing their own in-house documentation, I don't mean to like say that. The systems they need to function aren't great, what I just never want to do is use those systems against volunteers ever again. You think that was wildly inappropriate, and so that's why I just requiring things is one thing, or providing them for use is another. You know, facilitating their use and locking people out of, you know, doing it together, so staff has appropriate um records, fully support that. I, I, I don't think that's a condition.
Not good for, but, a tool.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm just glad that we now have this council side document that I didn't know about, and although it'd be easier for me.
Well, yeah, I just think that's a good idea to put that available, have, have a few of them in your portfolio, you know, when you have the.
At a council meeting, so right afterwards, like, oh, some things being sent to me, we have to go over there afterwards and.
Yeah, I mean, it is Sue Van's job, to manage the, the records of the council. You know, so that doesn't mean she has to, right down the minute, that doesn't mean she has to be at every meeting, but she has access to the information that was, that was discussed and the decisions that were made. And that becomes part of the ministry, becomes part of the city breakfast, and that is her responsibility, but she can get help, she can get help from us. Yeah, and she can help us do it, so this is, this, this. I thought you were gonna add stool, like. Oh, I hear that, like, my, my, I had a problem with that.
Contract defenders, there you go.
All right, is there anything else we're working here, can we move on to these? Good? All right, so I've got. Yeah. Out of the workshop, um, and we'll move to item number eight, which is to discuss and take any possible action on our advisory board and council communication. Yes, sir.
Um, I move that council directs, uh, council member Grummer to add the section. On the bottom page, starting on the bottom page forty-four of the packet, to the liaison policy and bring it back for approval.
Right, good sir, um, I don't know if I quite understand what that motion is.
Well, what's your head?
So on the, I'm adding to the liaison policy, did I not say liaison?
Yes, you did.
Okay, um, so on page forty-four of your packet, where it says example, and then the wording under it.
Mm-hmm.
That whole section where it's describing the steps, I would be bringing, I'd be adding it into the liaison policy and bringing it back to you. For approval or disapproval or changes or whatever, just being, putting it into the actual document.
With visuals?
I couldn't.
Are you playing music?
No.
What?
It wasn't anything that I knew of.
I mean, again, again, you know, it's like, it's like, that's, it does help.
It does.
Um. Okay, so the motion is um that we direct council member Grummer to add this section beginning at, on page forty-four, council makes a motion to send X from advisory board. And ending at um page forty-five and add that to the council liaison four-one-one policy. So seconded by council member Richardson. So just to be clear, it looks like the, the primary responsibility is on the liaison and not on anyone else until it gets to the last step. Is that correct?
Correct.
Right, the, the council liaison is the, is the key person, I guess. So I just need to know, is it something that, that the advisory board chair would look at and say, it, it makes their job easier, it makes their job harder?
I'm bringing it up again so y'all can see it.
You see the bottom thirty-four there?
Council member Grummer.
Yes?
On, on page forty-eight, you know, where, where I was mentioning the, the graphic piece of it.
Yeah.
Um, so. How much of that would need to be amended? Would it fit in with page forty-four, forty-five?
A lot of it would just be the clarifying parts of Toma, because that's all that section does, is describing the Toma elements that we don't spell out.
Right, and that, that's what I see is like, we've, we've got this example of communication flow, that's been part of the four-one-one from the Giga.
Yeah.
Um, and if we add the information from forty-four, forty-five, um, it sort of says, okay, here's the example, now here's graphically how that flows. So we may need to, we may need to do a little edit on the, on the um, on flow chart, you know, to match up with everything.
And if, and if council is willing, it's just, I will utilize the information, not necessarily the exact verbage, maybe it just goes into a flow chart.
Right, I, I guess, I think that um, that you're just, I think you're fine with the motion, um, but you're gonna bring it back, you know, with, with some editing, so. Um, all right, any other discussion, Mr. Hammer? Um, yeah, I'd, I'd like to make a, a friendly amendment, that perhaps we postpone this for until our, our advisory board chairs. Get another look at it before we, just if there's something else that they think is, either needs to be added or taken away to make it um. As good or better for the advisory board than it is now.
One second.
Um, so we're. We're only talking about the liaison's responsibilities, so I'm not sure what input there.
May I offer a suggestion that as liaison, you all. Start up a conversation and just seek additional input in between the next meeting, meaning email your chair and say, hey. Uh, council's bringing this up again at the next meeting, if you have any input, I would be happy to share that on your behalf, if you're only asking chair. Now, if you want this to go in front of your whole board, you could request that it be put on there very next. you could request that it be put on there very next meeting and their input come to council. But all council member Grummer is doing is updating a draft and bringing it back to us. There's nothing to postpone.
So what you're saying then is we would not be putting this into direct action today. This is just the next step.
It's part of the path.
Yeah, we're, we're editing an existing policy document.
And all we're doing is, I'm sorry, all we're doing is clarifying the Toma parts of the process.
Right.
Which we didn't have in our existing policy.
There was a point I was gonna make earlier, it just came back to me, but it's like, it's like, you know, sometimes I think that, like, our advisory boards think that we're just sort of thinking of ways to make their life suitable. And that, that's just not it. It's just exactly the opposite. Like, you know, I don't blame them for thinking that. So why are you, why are you like, rule them all the time? I'm gonna do Robert rules, I'm gonna do Toma. And, and if, if they, they have better understanding of, of how, you know, our city is governed. Um, because we don't make up the rules. You know, I mean, just a type of animal in a city. We're not a car city. You know, we advise, we counsel. It's just that they.
I'm trying to ask the. I was just showing her.
So again, this is an existing policy. Council member Grummer's only action on the table right now is to bring back an existing policy as a draft with additional edits in it per this discussion. I recommend rather than postponing a draft coming to us. We can vote it, we can just take the vote if you guys want. I don't, I don't.
Resuming it.
We're not opposed on. And as second said, the postponement, the chairs, you know, have a chance to, to feed in.
So now it's resuming.
So that amendment is on the floor.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we can vote that up or down. We can offer another amendment?
Charlie has recommended from now on that we vote on things rather than trying to pull amendments and backtrack. I mean, we just, on the July tenth meeting, saw how messy it gets whenever you just start amending, amending, amending. So we can take a vote on the postponement, whatever. Uh, I just was speaking to that item because I don't believe there's anything to postpone yet. And I don't believe we need a full council directive for people to ask chair people how they feel.
All right. So we'll vote on the amendment, the postponement. All in favor of postponement, please raise your hands. Would I? All right. All opposed? The name's Heather. So the motion on the floor is directing council member Grummer to add that section to the council liaison four one one policy package.
Um, I would like to, I don't know that we need to go through and itemize all the items to add to it. But I did wanna at least bring up then about the, um, the intervention of flow of business. And specifically, if you look at that flow chart, it sort of establishes like a single council member, like, you know, like we ran into an issue at one point where instead of just sending an item to the council member, I also copied the chair people on the board, cause I was, I had their emails. And that council person got upset cause they were like, I'm supposed to do that. And I'm like, oh, okay. I see how in reading this policy. So I think we actually kind of, I mean, it's a work in progress. I think it actually could probably use just a pass and updates in general. And then, so the item I was getting at is that, that idea of the, the, the obligation of that liaison and that chairperson and staff to carry items back and forth in their integrity with integrity, right? Meaning like you don't alter the item, you don't add things in without representing it as that, meaning I added this item. And you don't stop business. You, you move the item, even if you don't agree with it, even if you think it's stupid. Put it on the agenda, right? Because that's, that's the directive. So I don't know how to make that an amendment. I would almost just say, should, rather than trying to identify that, that paragraph, you could just say, will you bring back a draft? Like, can we just bring that back and update a draft and have people reach out to their chairpersons for input? In the meantime, let's come back again with that input. Cause I failed to think of that on my own. Like, I did not contact Mr. Miller and get his input on this document. He had, we have spoken about it a couple of times though. Um, he is also here today, so he was, and, and not to put you on the stand, but I don't think it's unreasonable for us to email them and just share, share what exists and ask for input. And then you bring it forward as a liaison in the meantime.
So I'm still creating the draft, but we're just gonna.
I think it needs a full pass over beyond just, um, like, I would say even in that flow chart, there's some items that could be made better, you know?
I agree.
Are you offering an amendment?
I'm, I'm, I'm asking just for the draft to come back. The amendment is to strike the qualifier of adding that specific paragraph.
Rephrase, I'm sorry.
Why not? Can you rephrase the motion?
Uh, council member Grummer's motion was that council directs council member Grummer to add the section at the bottom of page forty-four to forty-five in the council packet and bring it back, um, and add it to the liaison policy and bring it back to council for rules.
I would strike add section. That's my amendment.
What was that?
Add section portion where it specifies just.
Obviously, it'll be a full version instead of just.
Just the portion where it says adding this section. So it removes the qualifier of only that section and is asking for a draft to be brought back.
Fine. Okay. So the motion is to strike add section beginning on page forty-four through forty-five. And simply bring back amended policy. The draft, yeah. Yeah. Policy. Okay. So by Heinz, segmented by Grummer, um, in Skyon. Does it know the original motion again? So the original motion was to specifically say forty-four, forty-five, we're striking forty-four, forty-five and saying to bring back and edit it. To have a liaison four one one policy.
Yeah, this would be the amendment.
The amendment is to strike, uh, that's right. So we're voting on the amendment to strike that specifically forty-four, forty-five. All right. Show hands, say aye, dude. Say aye?
All right.
Aye.
And nay. So we will go on to the main motion to direct, uh, council member Grummer to, um, provide edits to the, um, liaison four one one policy and bring it back. All in favor, please raise, and say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. So go on to item number.
But we only have four votes.
Yeah.
Can you recall that, Lisa?
I'm sorry?
I saw, I only saw four hands. Can you?
Oh, was there, was there a nay? Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I thought that all hands, so four ayes, one nay. Motion passes. All right. Sorry about that. So item number nine. You recalled from the last meeting, um, we got proposals from a number of consultants in the municipal, um, management field. And to help in an interim role, um, of the proposals that were submitted, a couple of those that I was not bothered with, that we, um, so, um, Mr. Burton and I sat down and had Zoom interviews with, um, Mr. McDougal and also with, um, Mr. Bays, um, different times and were able to ask them questions. Mr. McDougal sent, um, a, an additional piece of information about his, his background services, I guess, what was, what he had sent or closer to a, a bit of a proposal. And this is sort of a one-two a, about his company, his firm and, and what they do. Um, they're both, I'd say, I, I don't know if you wanna, um, speak to the interviews to him, but, um, but Brian has twenty-five years as a manager. Uh, most recently, um, in Fort Arthur. Mr. Bays, Mike Bays, um, submitted his proposal. He has, he has, uh, his, his most recent city manager experience was in Wimberley. And so, uh, so it was, uh, uh, he heard about us quickly and, and responded. So, um, the interviews went well. Um, the, uh, there were a couple of things that, that, um, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong or if I'm misspeaking, or if you wanna have anything to say about it, but, um, but within the interviews, um, Mr. McDougal has a, a wealth of experience. Mr. Bays, you know, also has a great experience, um, is more localized. Um, he knows, he knows a lot about what has been going on in Wood Creek, um, because he was part of part of the, you know, some, when we met with the, with the Wimberley leadership while he was there, he was part of those meetings. Um, so we've had a lot of discussions about this, you know, what the needs of Wood Creek are. Um, how Wimberley and Wood Creek were together, issues that, that um, go across the valley. Um, and in addition, his hourly rate is less than half um, what, um, what any of the others were. Um, so it's, um, he's, he's, um, plus, now his firm is younger. You know, so, so that's probably part of it. But, um, but I, I felt that, um, for, and what he brings to the table at the rate he's quoting is, is, is of better value.
I agree with everything he said. Both candidates were excellent and would, would be, uh, great to work with. I think with Mr. Bays, uh, being more have more experience locally with the Wimberley Valley, along with members of his company have direct ties to Wimberley Valley. So there was, it was just more of a comfort that I felt with him, just basically. And he was bringing up topics, you know, to say this and that without us bringing it up, cause he, he's already in town, more so than, than Brian. But, um, it was just a little bit better kind of level with him and, uh, with some experience here. And, uh, while we liked him a little better.
Um, was, okay, not to go on that point of that, you know, you used to be here in Wimberley, um, did we ask questions that were local specific, like our aquifer issues, our water issues? Like, did we ask of candidates?
We, we didn't get into, into that level of detail, um, with them, but we were, we were really much more, um, we wanted an experienced level. Um, but not policy.
Yeah. Well, I was just thinking that there might be more connections for Mr. Lloyd Bays.
Well, he, he has a lot of connections in the area.
Yeah.
Um, Brian's in Austin and so on. I mean, he knows, in fact, if you'll remember, um, Charlie, uh, our city attorney was here. He said, I know all four of them. You know, they're all good. You know, they're all good. Um, and, and, and again, you know, I, I would bet anything that if we, um, if we, if we were to engage, um, uh, uh, basic company, his firm, uh, but we needed some specialized, you know, sort of long-term city manager experience question that he would be happy to, to work with us on. Um, same thing if it went the other way. We decided on, on, um, McDougal and Associates. Um, and we need some help from Bays on locally oriented things, then, then be available. So I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a either or. I think we just need to make the best, um, best option for us. I think.
I know the majority of the work's gonna be done remotely, but would it wrap up the cost a lot with Mr. Bays being located in Plano versus Mr. McDougal in Austin for having to be onsite?
Yeah, we, we, we would be responsible for, for housing when he's here, but, um, if you look at the hourly rate, you know, we can more than afford the, the, a room at the Wimberley Inn for a couple of nights. And so I think it's more, I think more than balanced of that. And, and in fact, you know, except the family, he, he may just stay with family, I don't know. But, but we're, you know, we, we weigh that into the, into the, um, big place.
Yeah, the same question I was asking.
Okay. Yeah. So most of it is, we, we would, we would expect that either gentleman would be here, you know, in-house, you know, for, you know, at least a few days, just to kick it off. Um, and just sort of get a, get the label on it, you know, get the meeting and, and, and work with and talk individually with, you know, members of the staff, uh, members of the council and really get a sort of a sense of, of what the direction is that where they can be the most helpful. Um, but then from there, it'd be, you know, sort of Zoom on, I mean, my on-call Zooms, they're probably big, I would almost certainly be a regularly scheduled. Um, then meeting, um, on a weekly or every two, three days basis, you know, but, but, uh, we did say that we wanted to keep the overall contract under twenty K. Um, which I think is, is, uh, much more doable under the, under the, um, base contract than, than we do find out frankly.
And the twenty K was what, five years?
Uh, we were thinking about three months. And, you know, within, but by that time, some of the, the, the thought is within that window, we should have a handle on who would wanna offer the permanent position to me. We were not so fortunate with Mr. Rule, um, you know, being able to turn that one around in three months, uh, a bit longer, but I think we've got some experience on this one.
Is it posted?
Yes. On our website, on T M L, and it's going to be getting to the Wimberley View along with the notification of R and P for the tree board, arvers and the land engine services on.
And over.
The, being under the certified arver.
That's not it.
Yeah, that was something, I'll look.
We were just making sure, I was just asking that they were all posted, but yeah, it's on the agenda, so.
Yeah, we're, we're, let's confine it to this.
Has there been a motion that's been made yet?
No, I'm gonna, I'm requesting a motion. Or I'm willing to make it, or I'm willing to entertain.
I move that we select Mike Bays as a municipal administration consultant for the city of Wood Creek and direct the mayor and staff to enter into an agreement for professional services.
I'll second it.
I did have one question though. Um, the term of three months and not to exceed twenty thousand dollars is not explicitly included in this motion, but you did state them. And typically a contract will come back to council. So as long as y'all do intend to bring back whatever contract is negotiated for final approval, typically in an executive session, but it can be out, but, um, then I wouldn't necessarily make those stipulations if I make them.
Do you wanna make one?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have. I'm just, I'm worried about the timeline. I mean, if you are directing, you're directing mayor and his staff to enter into an agreement, um, then we're entering into an agreement.
Without bringing a contract out?
Yeah, and we can, we'll share the contracts, but the, the agreement is based on the, on the, um, on the, the rates that were quoted, um, and the fact that we said in the last meeting that we have contracted, that, that the three months was the estimate, the, the twenty thousand um, half was something that was. half was something that was, was proposed as part of that.
Okay, well, I'll make an amendment that the cost of the services not exceed twenty thousand without additional council approval.
I'll second it. Okay, so the motion is, is, the main motion was to engage Clear Career Professionals, Mike Bays' firm, to provide municipal administration consulting services and to direct the mayor and staff to enter into an agreement with Clear Career Professionals. The amendment is that cross not to exceed twenty thousand dollars without additional approval by council. So vote on the amendment on the twenty thousand fat. Yeah, I'll put the ready to be answered.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So we'll vote on the main motion as amended, which is to direct mayor and staff to enter into an agreement with Clear Career Professionals not to exceed twenty thousand dollars.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I think that we're going to be very happy with this. All right, so moving on to the ten, which is to discuss the comprehensive plan, the comp plan, comprehensive plan, including the national to create a survey and say that doesn't grab the section with most recent census data. That's yours, Ms. Murphy.
Thank you, ma'am. I move that council takes action to update the comprehensive plan, including creating a citizen survey and updating the demographic section use, using the most recent census data.
Second?
Seconded by Mayor Burton Hines. All right, let's just speak to that, sir.
Um, yeah, so I know the package is large, but I wanted to put the comprehensive plan back in front of y'all. That way, also, when we, I included T and Z's recommendations, I thought it might be good for those who are interested to compare that document to the existing document. And then I'm scrolling around this term on page eighty-eight. Very hard to have. Really? Um, one thirty-two starts the T and Z recommendation that council accepted last meeting. And then one thirty-seven is a sample citizen survey draft that I'd like council to kind of elaborate and expand upon. Oh, citizens. That's it. And that would, you know, that'd be a the questions, and then on page one thirty-eight, as council member, it says, these are screenshots from the census data, which has, you know, for us as a city, it's dramatically changed based on what the information is in the comp plan. For me, it's those, it's, the question I kind of have in front of all of us right now is we know we need to update the census, because the information's just, it's changed. We also have the opportunity to send out some citizen surveys, so I'd like us to kind of, if we have the additional questions we want to consider, and Jack, did we still have that resource of that third-party person? Was it a university student or something?
Oh, oh, no, we'd have to go, we'd have to start that process back over again. What I said was, you know, Dr. Katara, it is part of that department.
Okay.
And could probably lead us in the wrong direction.
So I'd like us to kind of discuss building a citizen survey. I put in some sample questions that I thought were relevant, because it's kind of the next thing on the list.
This is the, this is from the twenty, twenty census?
Which one, Eric?
The, the data that you're, that you shared, that's interesting, because, you know, we've been talking about like over eighteen hundred people, and this is like seventeen seventies.
Well, we are in twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, yeah.
No, there is more, that number has since changed. You can find an updated number through the tax roll.
Yeah.
And that, that is bigger.
And, you know, maybe we need to use that information instead of, I don't know.
You, you really should, because what's considered the like.
Yeah, yeah, I've just been saying eighteen fifty, and it's a seven pole, you know, a hundred people in there. I mean, it's irrelevant, I mean, that, that's the matter, the census, the census, I mean, this is, this is what the government's going to do until twenty-third.
Yeah.
Right, but there are updates that we, that are handy.
Probably.
Well, also, I thought.
Posits value is far different than when that was selected.
Been four years, yeah.
Yeah.
And our median age has gone down. I mean, so just compared to.
But income level and average income is kind of way up, too.
So these are all just little factors that, you know, when we see it in our existing comp plan, we might need to adjust, and then the census hadn't been out, so, you know.
Yeah, it was based on estimates, I thought.
But let's get back to the survey, I would like.
I have a question, as we're given. Okay, well, you gave me a chance to bring up something that worked away a long time ago. And I hope somehow we can incorporate different kinds of questions. This, is this the survey we're talking about? Or this is a different one?
So that one was sent out?
Yes.
No, we're talking about creating a new one.
New one, okay, but what, it's still the same one. When we, I analyzed every question, checked mark, and one of the things that wasn't in the survey, but it came out strong, is, all right, slow traffic was a big one, pools, and.
Slow traffic?
It's like slowing.
Yeah. Walkways.
People were complaining, but it's not a speed issue, it's a law.
No, a hundred and eighteen questions talked about stop spending our money, unnecessary joyful spending, taxes too high. When we ask questions, I would like to also address people's concerns that we are, where, where do they have the money spent? You know, I, I'd like to see our questions directed at some of the concerns that we have in arriving place.
May I ask you a question? Have you, give me context for this, as in?
Talking about the comments.
So comments in general.
Yes.
When, once we got to open questions.
Yes.
So the distinction I would make on that is open com, so let's say, everyone says, let's spend a million dollars, not that's the answer, and then ten people say, let's not spend any money. The data above is the controlling factor.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, let's make a question, instead of making people fill this in, let's say, would you rather spend money on trails or a new park?
Well, it's not either or.
Okay.
A city has the capacity to fund multiple capital improvement projects at the same time. The city also has the capacity to, to manage and involve itself in multiple capital improvement projects at the same time. Forcing people into a false dichotomy of you can only have parks or no roads is not real. So like, I don't want to, I mean, when we're asking survey questions, they aren't meant to lead people in directions or create environments where we're emotionally pushing them into a box, right?
Well, good, let me, okay, but on the other hand, where people seem to have these needs to talk about, how are you utilizing my money? It isn't saying, well, we know the number one thing they wanted were roads, we've got roads now. That was like the big black line, then we had next lines, but I think when, when we ask questions, well, I just like to make sure that there's questions where they say, none of the above, I would rather spend money on this.
Well, if you had, the, the question, the sample question, they'd say, none, do nothing. That was, that was one of the.
But that was just one, okay.
No, your question had a, don't do anything, or, or here's my idea of what you should do instead.
And they also ranked it on priorities, meaning they have the opportunity to say what of the survey had higher priority than others. So an op, so a question that you're looking for, Councilmember Bailey, would be something like, do you feel the city
On both questions ahead.
appropriately spends tax money?
Yeah.
Right, open, right, do, do you approve of the, how the city currently spends tax money? And you could give some examples. Another question in, along those same lines as, would be, if you could ask the city to spend more money on an item out of these, rank your top three, or if you, if you believe the city should scale back spending of these items, which are the areas where you believe have excess, right? So you're not creating a false.
Pitting.
You can only have one of these, we're asking for a direction on which, which way we should flow, right? Because we are capable of more than one item at a time.
Okay.
Do we agree that the survey that went out for the comp plan in the first place was a decent survey?
Yeah.
The, 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 that's part of it, was, was, was the comments afterwards. I mean, all the things that we, we did as far as one through five, what you liked, what you didn't like, was good, but I think the comments part was even better. If you have to have a comment, I mean, the, the reason I had that, the reason I had that is that, you know, we, we put a lot of work into that, in the survey, we took the information, we built a comprehensive plan, read, or that information. I would, I mean, part of what I would like to know is, well, you know, how you think we did? You know, when we asked the question before, you know, there it is, I mean, if we asked, if we asked some of the same questions, you know, but years later, it'd be interesting to see, I mean, obviously, they're not going to say fix the roads.
Well, you could say, you can ask the question, how did we do?
Right, you can get some feedback on, on, like, with the last, with our last citywide survey, we had, you know, what your priority, you said roads. You got roads, how did that go for you? But, but I kind of know what the interest is, but.
I just wanted to speak why I gave a thumbs down on the last survey. For two reasons, the number one being, we asked a bunch of demographic questions, and then we only said one per household, so we have literally made that entire part of the survey almost unusable. And luckily, whenever you broke out the statistics, it was still statistically viable, because we have a lot of single older ladies living here. So it kept the survey valid, because it still honored that the majority of the people who were responding were single ladies and this and that, so it was actually reflective of the majority of people who responded, if that makes sense. But we don't want to do that again. We don't want to ask demographic questions like, how old are you?
And only allow one person.
And only allow one person to give.
Yeah, and, and I was, you know, I was, I was looking at sort of the questions that, I, I, I know that there were some flaws in the design and implementation, I was thinking more in terms of the questions that we wanted answers to, which are like, what is your top priority? What, if, if we're going to develop, if something is going to be developed in the city, you know, here's a list, you know, selfless wonder, but those are the kinds of things I was, I was going after. Sitting, I mean, I spoke at, at length about the, the flaws and the design of going out and being, you know, so patriarchal, and, and that's how I'm having it.
And so my second comment, if we're looking at that comp plan survey, was, it was an, it was an incomplete draft that was taken and used as a final, and that's unfortunate, and so one of the things that I would have recommended if allowed to continue on as a volunteer instead of getting fired, would have been that we eliminate the, the mid-level mediocrity, meaning like, don't offer an option that is neutral, because if you notice the data that we collected, it kind of pulled towards the center. And so typically, you want to force a choice, because that middle data is useless, it tells you nothing. So while it feels good to put it on there, right, because some people are neutral, it actually, from a usable standpoint of being able to like give directives to someone reading the results, it's pointless. So that would be my recommendation. The last point being on that, being with that survey, is we actually should repeat most of those questions again. This is like the whole. Yeah.
So just to clarify, mid-level mediocrity means I don't care. I don't care either way.
Yeah, there was a lot of the, a lot of the, yeah.
Or, or like it all turned to the middle, so it was like, wow, we don't have strong feelings, which made the strong feelings turn out, but also, when everything's turning to the middle, you come out of that with that result going like, what do we do?
Well, there'll be, there'll be things like, oh, I really want this, and I really want this, and they're this far apart, and I really want this other thing, and I really want this, so there's, it's hard to go, well, five more people like this thing more than they don't like this thing, where if you have yeses and nos, you'll possibly go, oh, they really mean it when it comes to trails.
Right, right, I mean, there, there was, I mean, I remember having arguments over the last couple of years, or so, about, you know, how somebody extrapolate data out of the, out of the survey, like comprehensive plan, I'm like, no, that wasn't a mandate, that was just people were interested in that, but it's not a mandate, I mean, like, fix the freaking roads, that was mandatory, you know?
Yeah, but also, there's one thing, so the, I read it in a particular way, and maybe your topic brings it up, is they had, these are the, you know, top points that we want you to do, and then there was an insert of do nothing, and then there's more things listed, and my brain read it as, okay, these, the people who voted do nothing are ranked at number four, so things under that have lesser ranking.
Right, and, and the, the one was, you know, if you wanted development in the city, what do you want to see? You know.
By far.
A good restaurant.
Yeah.
Yeah, number one.
None.
And then the next, the next response, the next most popular response is, don't do anything.
Yeah.
You know, so, so how does that discount everything else below that? You know, and, and.
Kind of does, my brain.
It tend to, you know, so, so build a restaurant and everything else begin.
It's also a little problematic, some of that, because, you know, we don't actually have the opportunity to stop development. So just like, with that, that survey never had a final pass-through from somebody trained in surveys, I'll just put it that way, right, Kate Fries was fired, it was given to a, a group of volunteer citizens, they fired the one person trained in surveys, all that was on it, so it ended there. I, I am advocating that we could come up with a group of questions to ask of important topics or things we'd like to see repeated from previous surveys, as demographics do change, or we just need to ask it again, right, like, oh, what's your satisfaction with your city council, right? That was one of them, where people got to really lay into that existing administration, right? We need to open ourselves up in the same manner. So we could easily compile a document like that, even have input from advisory boards, and then turn it over to, whether it's a university, having students workshop it as a, as a class project, or we, you know, work on consulting somebody, I don't know, but there are real professionals out there who are trained in, in, in writing questions that aren't.
Yeah, I, I will, I mean, if council so directs, which, you know, I would, I would hope you do, I'll, I'll reach out to Dr. Katara, see if he has recommendations, if people we could meet with as university faculty on, on developing a plan for, for I'm trying to think of the right word I want to use, because it's not just a redo of the survey, it's a.
Okay.
Yeah, updated the survey.
But it's going to be expanded, I would hope.
Yeah, so, I mean, they gotta take a look at the survey. In fact, if you go back to the survey room a few years ago, you know, when I was at council before, because that, that's fascinating information as well. Take, take, here's some, here's some citywide surveys that we've done. You know, here's our comp plan. Um, here's the survey that, that helped create the comp plans. You know, we want to know now where we stand since then. You know, with some of the, some of the same things, but also what has changed in the world that, um, that we need to be, you know, focused on that? You know, because like, it, it's slightly different city than we were four years ago.
Well, I want to talk about this one survey question because, I don't know how we can ask this, but this, this is the kind of question bothers me. It says, how would you rate the follow-throughs and priority for addressing pedestrian mobility? And it lists them. But what I want to know is, do the people live on those streets? You know? I really want to know if you want, let's say, I don't mind there being a pathway into Brook Meadow because it's making a bug baiting.
Yeah, we're on with that.
Right, so how, how do we know?
That's not how citywide voting works.
Yeah.
So you could have, there should be.
It's a candy by region, if that were.
No.
Well, we also, we also did, um, we also did, didn't we do some cross-education on geographic areas in the city?
So Kay Fries, Kay Fries did that to bring in citizen representatives. There was no cross, I think in the survey, they marked what region they lived in. And I, I don't believe anybody, Kay Fries kind of, I don't think anybody drilled down into that to really link up how one area was voting versus another. But I honestly didn't even love the way they, they marked up the city. That, I wasn't involved in that choice. That was between, I'm thinking Gloria and Brenton and Kay Fries, but.
Well, so my concern on that is it pushes the forward the concept of community, where we are a city holistically.
Right.
And if I, if not us individual citizens, not as council people, go, we want the trail to go right in front of Jeff's house, and Jeff goes, I don't want a trail from my house. The majority still gets to decide how the city functions. And which was weird, but I mean, this, they're not voting here. They're kind of, they're giving us the information on how we feel.
Yeah, that's my good.
I just want to speak to, it would be wildly inappropriate for us to pick and choose which topics get majority vote and which don't. I'll just put it that way. For example, chickens, right? If we said only houses who can, uh, actually have chickens based on basic regulations get to vote, that might change that for the entire community. What about STRs? What if we said only people with, who live in, in the district where STRs allow, get to vote on whether or not we're going to allow them?
For the whole city.
For the whole city. So we cannot pick and choose which topics. The, the way that happens is that if the citizens living on a bus to drive hate the Ropa and they're sick of it being open, right? Uh, they would like to petition the city collectively and get a group of signatures pertaining to their street for us to close it. That's how they do that, right? That's how a group of citizens advocates for their special interest to a council. The council should never be imposing special interests on the citizens.
But then also in just the same vein, why these four or five streets were chosen?
From the, the previous maps that were in the comp plan.
I will also say that these are just draft questions, and I drafted them. And the reason those streets were chosen is because they are the only major streets in the city, meaning they're the collector or feeder streets or whatever big word you, if you notice, it's, it only admits roads that lead to nowhere. It's not, uh, you know, it's literally every major street. There are, what, I mean, what, it says do nothing or a road of your choice. Right? It literally covers everything I would say. And maybe it's a question that doesn't make it in the end, right? I mean, I don't think anybody's saying these are two citizen survey questions right now.
No, no, this is not, it's just a sample. But it is, it is, I'm talking about the community or, or whatever the both side of that is. It's like, like, you know, when we're talking about, you know, traffic calming and, and, you know, speed cushion, whatever, it's like, it's like, yeah, I get to speak to that, but you don't because you live on a full side. You don't have to worry about that. So you don't get to talk, and, and that's, that's where your mind typically goes. I live on a street that did not have any traffic, and now it has a lot of it. So I get to speak to the speed cushions, I get to grow, but, but.
But I don't, because I.
But you don't, because you live, you know, you don't, you don't deal with it every day.
Well, even another one, I think, is that drainage. There's probably a third of the city that's going to be affected by drainage. And it's going to be very expensive. But two-thirds of the city, they go, no, I don't want to spend that money in your drainage.
So, I mean, that was the collective fear with the road fund, remember? Everyone was scared, the road fund's not going to pass, major roads have already been improved. Guess what? The road funds still pass because our citizens aren't awful, right? They actually do care about the collective good, and they do have the capacity to view these out of their own front lawn, I believe. And they might not support an item, right? And that is their choice to not support an item. And as a council member, when I hear somebody who lives on a road with a lot of traffic lining speed cushions, and then I hear somebody on a cul-de-sac who would never even use the speed cushions, I, as a council member, get to decide which viewpoint weighs heavier with me. Does that make sense? They both get a right to speak. Right? So we're not going to admit people's opinions because they don't live in the area primarily affected. We might say they matter less, like we did with the Brook Meadow overlay. We listened to the Brook Meadow citizens on that one. Because it did directly impact them, and it only impacted them by passing it.
But we did offer the rest of the city.
Public hearing.
Public hearing and, and input, and there was zero.
Yeah. So, well.
There was power.
Yeah.
There was definitely input.
There was, there was very little input from.
Other citizens besides a small group of people.
Yeah, but I, I did, I did remember when we were talking about the fund, my, my underlying fear was, we don't have to get any votes from Woodbridge Drive of Brook Hollow, they got. You know, they're not going to want to spend their tax money on that, they found it real.
That's what lies in your thoughts.
Yeah, and I don't know where the input came from. But, but it's still, you know, that was my fear, that if it failed, it's going to be, you know, Brook Hollow and Woodbridge residents. But it didn't fail.
Yeah, we can't actually tell where they live when they call in.
Right.
So don't know where that came in.
The other thing, once you start, I mean, people identify themselves, they tend to get a little uncomfortable, and they might not get authentic answers. So then if you're correlating certain answers with where they live, that gets even more, like, you know.
So next, on the survey, do we make a subcommittee or are we doing everything directed, like to make an initial draft where we'll take the old questions, how we massage them a little bit? Do we make a subcommittee?
If you keep pointing your finger at me, I'm going to snap at all.
I'd like to be a part of that.
I know you've done a lot, that's why I wanted.
I'd like to be a part of it.
Yeah, I, I think that what, what I would like to see is that, you know, if we are going to get some input from, from professionals.
Start there.
Start, start there, bring them in, workshop it, um, discuss, you know, what, before we, before we do anything, because they're probably going to want to say, okay, I want to, I want to have access to you and to you, um, and, and we'll, so that, the subcommittee may be a couple of us and a student and a professor. Joe, what? Yeah, I don't know, Joe is, if we wanted to open a music venue, I think Joe would be the perfect, uh, perfect person.
He's still trying to launch the, the nonprofit, so I think we let him focus on that, but.
Yeah, but he's not, I, I think he's somebody in his department.
Yeah. I had, um, just four draft comments for this item that I'd like to throw out there. One, I'd like us to send directives to advisory boards to complete tasks that were outlined for them, that they maybe haven't, and maybe they don't realize those are pending tasks for them. Um, so if you look through that, um, document from P and Z, and you notice if it lists your advisory board as something they were supposed to be working on, let's, let's make sure we ping at them and remind them. And maybe even suggest that they give us some sort of feedback on why they haven't taken up the item or if they intend to, you know? Um, the next thing being, I'd like to make a general call for questions to be added. I think it makes sense for all council members to, um, submit items for questions. You don't have to try to write a question, right? You could just submit, I think, it could be simple, like, I think we need to ask resident questions on blah, 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 and you list them. Or if you want to get really fancy and write some questions, I'm not limiting it. But I do think a general call to question, for questions would be good. I don't think we should even limit it to council. I, I, I think it makes sense to have the advisory board have an item where we say, do you all have any citizen survey things you would like to add for consideration for this, right? Like, is anything at the top of your list? Because then we send that spider web out, we get more input and influence, and a bigger variety, and just. The last, uh, or, sorry, second to last is four. Uh, the third being, should be considered creating another committee to generate, to work on this. And I'm not talking about a, a subcommittee of council. I'm talking about kind of like we did with the water tap course. Yeah, it's a citizen committee, people who'd like to be involved with this again, give direct input on questions and topics of concern. It's just something to consider. That is typically how comp plans are done in general. You form a little committee, right? And I'm not saying they have to be subject to Toma or any of that stuff. But if we did, you know, even if it was public and, and, you know, we had that meeting and people can attend, I don't think there's anything wrong with that. And the last is, um, we kind of already addressed it, pursuing some kind of contract with a company to assist in this. I just, I really want to take the controversy out of it and have it, um, more professionally managed, so.
Could you make some of those into amendments?
Okay, one. When is the motion on the table, right?
There is no motion on that.
Uh, actually.
Yeah, also, there is, the motion is just that it's stated in town.
Yeah.
Um, okay, comprehensive plan including the not limited creation of a survey updating demographic session with most recent census data.
I did read it off my sheet, the cover sheet.
All right, I will amend to state liaisons show contact their boards about paths outlined in the comp plan uncompleted. They should make a general call for questions to be added for consideration.
I'll second, but I have a question.
Are you done?
I don't think it was done.
Well, that was one amendment. I do think we should maybe break out the other two, but.
Um, the question is, when you say the comp plan, is it, the initial time you brought it up was, what, P and Z brought as an update?
That's just an analysis of it, so if you reference that document, you're referencing the comp plan appropriately. All they did was distill the comp plan into bullet points.
Yeah.
And then I worked with Ms. Johns to give her a city update throughout all of those bullet points, and then P and Z did their work, so.
Should we just, all right.
We just have an amendment, you seconded by speaking.
Well, I actually seconded it too.
Yeah.
Oh, you did, okay. So the amendment is to, um, have liaisons contact the boards about, um, uh, incomplete tasks related to the comprehensive plan and a general call, um, to the advisory boards for a question that I don't see included.
Mm-hmm.
All right, further discussion? Go on, the amendment, call it favorably, say aye.
Aye.
So then the next two are the concept of creating areas and committee to work on this and then contracting with a company. But I believe that Mayor Asco is already, you know, worked on number four to see about a lead, at least with, through the university. So I don't necessarily want to make that amendment right now. Do we want to try to form some kind of committee?
Let's find. It kind of makes sense to like, let him do some investigation and see who's on board and kind of like, what do they want to do? Oh, sorry, I drank my water.
Okay.
Yeah, so then, so then do you know where the written layers of the contacts?
Reach out to my professional.
Good. Good. Professional, how fun, uh, survey.
Yeah.
It could be, I mean, it could be UT, it could be, you know, a consultant.
So I meant to direct the mayor to seek professional consulting. Starting.
That, before I leave, uh, if this passes. All right. All right, we'll go on that amendment. Call it favorably, please signify by rating hands aye.
Aye.
All right, any further amendments? Now we'll go back to the, uh, main motion. As amended, will be to update the comprehensive plan, including the not limited creation of a survey and updating the demographic section, section with new recent census data, to, um, having liaisons contact the boards about, about, um, incomplete tasks related to the comprehensive plan and a general call for questions from advisory board members, and then to direct the mayor to seek professional, um, help on, on creation of the survey. Call it favorably, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so that is our agenda. Um, any council considerations for agenda items next move regular council meeting? And I will say that, you know, one of the things that we, we talked about in doing this is that somebody raises it and then we go, yeah, I think that's good. Just so we can, can, um, I would look at some other, other council the same day, because they do that, but they're, that. Yeah, I agree, you know, I second what you're saying. What?
I would like to, um, entertain an agenda item at the next meeting to talk about, we have $21,925 that was allocated to this budget for a pedestrian survey. I would like to consider activating that ser- going forward with that survey without any input from the I and M plan. Um, part of the reasoning is, we have two members down, we have two members that are on vacation. I won't be back from vacation until the middle of August. And, um, so they won't, we don't even have a committee yet to try to organize this survey. I was very concerned when I saw.
I don't have much discussion for a lot of it.
Oh, okay, yeah, there might be, you know, I do, right? I would like to bring that up and talk about.
Second.
Um, whoops.
Anything else?
No.
Um, I'm bringing forward the current update to the fiduciary policy and the update to the fund balance policy.
And legal has provided the updated resolutions. Should those be accepted at the next meeting?
Any objection? No, you agree. Anything else, Ms. Cormer?
Um, I'm considering, so I've, I've been reviewing, I'm thinking I'll just bring it as a draft, a red line draft for, uh, the city administrative position and the city secretary position, because our current code has states, it takes away city, state gives certain things to the city secretary position, and that our code takes it away knowingly, stating so, and gives it to the city manager, which is, so I wanted to make sure that was correct. But I just wanted to bring a red line draft.
Do you have descriptions?
No.
No, just in the code, in the code, so.
Council hasn't actually already seen a sample of it, we just didn't utilize it. So.
And this is not something that we've updated. It is old code, it couldn't even trace down. It might be based on old state law.
It might, well.
You know what I mean? Like, it might have been in alignment back then, I don't, nobody's, you've done the crossover.
Well, so it literally says, these are the duties of the city secretary that we are assigning to the city manager. So. So.
Really?
Right, but I'm saying the law back then might have a different.
Oh, I see, it might have been allowing.
Yes, but now it'd be legal what it's doing. And it, so when we're talking about necessary code updates, that's a clear example of how we are, the city. If it attempts to enforce that, it's violating law.
Yeah.
Just asking for clarification, so you're.
I'm only writing drafts, I'm not.
Authority or. Sorry, and job description?
They're both kind of, just not.
Chapter thirty?
Yep, in two sections, two different items.
Okay. And who is everybody, thank you. Okay, want to talk separately about um the placement of sidewalks on the um, the engineers draft?
Well.
There's a Freeland Turk item coming, I've already submitted it, they.
Yeah, you do that as part of the discussion.
As part of that. They have uh Freeland Turk in thought for package to the city. It likely should have disappeared on this in meet, meeting, um, it was just missed. So it will appear on the next.
Yeah.
For the.
Are you bringing that?
I've already submitted it, but it's administrative, I should just pop up, but it might be submitted, so. Well, I, I still have the bathroom and the rain collection stuff pending, so if you want to second it, that would be a moving.
Second.
Um, I am attempting to circle back with those companies again. I did imply that we weren't in a rush, but and now it's taking all summer, so it's getting a little bit long. Uh, and just some more information on that, it's a rainwater collection on all city structures. So that would include the Gendivo, the shed in this building. Um, and then the bathroom is a build on site. One company is looking at purchasing something like what Parks did, but a cheaper version. Um, but the others are looking at on-site builds for a small restroom, maybe you can buy it.
Yeah, and budget?
Yes, sir, yes, the proposed budget will come back on your, on our agenda. And it will feature the documents we just all agreed upon in a workshop, right? Because we never took a vote on it, but they'll come back. Uh, we have the Hays County information now, so we can finalize some of those numbers. We were working with like estimates before, um, so you'll have that.
Could be.
So, so you'll have where we, we are currently sitting, that will be in there, unedited documents. And then you'll have new proposed ones that have the finalized Hays County numbers in. Doesn't that make sense to consider? And then obviously, we can have discussion and and.
Is there any time to edit or is that the final ones that we have?
No, there's lots of time to edit. The final submission for the proposed budget is actually late in August. So the timeline that was printed up when we were working off of was actually about when we go to vote. So if we were going to surpass the voter approval rate, that timeline is really rapid and fast because we have to get an independent election valid, right? But since we're not doing that, we can all just. Yeah.
But if we had, if we forgot an expense or something, we have time.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. But there, I mean, is there any need or especially needing that anybody knows of between now and the 14th of August?
Unless you want to talk about one more budget workshop too.
No, no, we have worked up the crap out of that budget.
No.
I think, well, I think any more discussion could occur in a regular meeting.
Yes.
You know what I mean? Because again, what you have to remember is we are only talking about our proposed budget still. So you, we still have to do all of that again. We have to go through multiple public hearings and then we still have to vote on the final one. So the proposed issue basically says to the public, hey, guys, this is where we're at, come give us input.
What about that um Oak Orchard replat, public hearings and all that? Do we know anything else about that yet?
Uh, no. Yeah? But I have a, we have a call, Charlotte tomorrow, and then set up another. Oh, you, it's about the replat.
The replat over here.
Yeah, that's the one, uh.
They said these that go, there's a public hearing.
Yeah, that, Gary said that it should probably go to, it should go to public hearing. And then, so that's what he sent over today.
Yeah, the question was, did it have to go to public hearing, P and D public hearing, and then accountable public hearing? For that replat, that, we saw the, we saw the preliminary plat, and this is the final plat. Um, so, so we're getting a, we're getting a reading from Charlie on whether we have to do two public hearings. Maybe the simple thing happened, or if it requires a public hearing, if we can combine them um into one, just to make it easier. But but it does have to follow the rules, the zoning. So that, I believe that, you know, whether that gets on the August fourteenth agenda, I know that they would like to see it happen soon.
I think it actually technically has to come, like, we have a timeline, so we have to keep following. But I don't know about the public hearing stuff, so if we had a call meeting for that, I think August fourteenth is still within that. I mean, the only thing that happens is, whoopsie, it's approved.
Well, that's it. Charlie, Charlie says, yeah, yeah, you definitely need to do a public hearing. You can do a joint public hearing with P and Z, you can do it at your next meeting on the fourteenth, because there's no time to, to, you know, get the, the word. And and then it only really needs to be advertised to the homes in Oak Orchard, right?
Yeah.
Right, but there's still the ten day notice between the hearing.
Right, so if he says, yeah, you need a hearing, I mean, we can, we can post it for notice, then after that, if we need to, we need to get it a paper. So, and that would, that would make a deadline to have it on the August fourteenth agenda. Does it include also up to a thousand or two thousand feet away from it?
Two hundred.
Two hundred, is it two hundred feet?
Other than Z, over there.
Two hundred.
Yeah, other than concrete.
It does.
That's why I questioned the work of a carrier, because they've already done the, they have the mail out certified letters and all that. So.
Yeah, that's, and when Charlie knew that and said, hey, don't worry about it, then I'm good with that, I just, I just wanted.
I think our code requires it. So, again, this is the, this, this is that area code that we keep talking about, it's so cumbersome and messy and antiquated. And I mean, we're literally living the problem of our code right now in 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 roll time, so.
All right, well, it sounds like you'll have a good meeting ahead of you, I'll be thinking of.
No, you won't, we don't.
I'll come back. All right, so.
I hope you do, because otherwise Monica kills you and lays your national forests.
Um, any announcements? Other than that, you know, just, we get back, have a meeting, and then a few days later, we have a party. You know, so, um, so don't be out of, don't miss, don't miss the order that the king, there are several of them. And you're all invited to my birthday party too.
Yeah.
Yeah, we made the announcement. Freddie, Freddie and forty.
Not, not all of you.
I'm going to speak, Ben?
Okay.
I have six eighteen, one second.